Because I have it. Then we'll begin with the proclamations. And Commissioner DeGialamo, if you could start with National Recovery Month.
It would be my pleasure to be able to do that. Whereas everyday courageous men and women take the step toward reclaiming their lives from substance use disorder, during National Alcohol, Drug and Addiction Recovery Month, we celebrate those who have chosen the path of long-term recovery, honor those who make recovery possible, and encourage those in need to seek help. An estimated 25 million people in the United States need treatment for substance dependence, with only 2.7 million receiving some kind of specialized treatment. Forty percent suffer from co-occurring disorders. In Bucks County, thousands of people are affected by substance use disorder. And just that part, 25 million people, estimated, and I think it's much higher than that, people in this country suffer from some type of addiction. The recognition that recovery from addiction is a reality that sends a message of hope to the community, and especially in these times with Pennsylvania's overdose and COVID crisis. Whereas National Recovery Month works to improve the lives of those suffering from addiction and mental health disorders by raising awareness, combating stigma, sharing public policy, and educating communities about prevention, treatment, and recovery support. As we celebrate individuals who have sustained long-term recovery, we also honor the family members, treatment and recovery support professionals, and champions who make recovery possible, and they truly are champions. This year, the Council of Southeast Pennsylvania will virtually honor National Recovery Month with events on September 2nd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd. Pro Act Recovery Walk 2020 will be a virtual walk on September 12th, with people reporting in from all over the county and country. Now therefore do we, the Board of County Commissioners, Chair Diane Ellis-Morseaglia, Vice Chair Robert Harvey, and Jean DeGialamo hereby proclaim September as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. In doing so, we congratulate the Council of Southeastern Pennsylvania and Pro Act for their collaboration in honoring Recovery Month with, while virtual, recovery walks, and we encourage all Bucks County residents to participate. I believe Jen King's here.
Jen King is here. Hi Jen. If you have something you'd like to say, you can step over to the podium and...
Good morning. I'm Jen King. I'm the Executive Director of the Council of Southeast PA and our Pro Act program. It's my great pleasure to be here today. My colleagues across the country maybe aren't as fortunate as I am, because I get to do this work here in Bucks County, where our Commissioners, our District Attorney, our Drug and Alcohol Commission Chair, our county leadership, all stand as one. The theme this year is about joining together and connection. And we know that addiction is a disease of isolation, and we know that connection is part of the answer. And I'm so grateful for the strong support all of our institutions here in Bucks County. Understand the disease of addiction, understand the power of peers in helping people in their own recovery, and support that work with their funding, with their support, with their words, and their actions. So it's my privilege that I get to do this work every day. It's my joy to celebrate Recovery Month, where we get to see what recovery looks like. And it looks like your coaches, your teachers, your sisters, your brothers, your moms and dads, living their lives, achieving their goals, with the disease of substance use disorder part of their story, but not their whole story. And recovery being a really powerful part. So join us online every Wednesday night at 6:00. We'll be on, you can find out more on recoverywalks.org. And then on the morning of Saturday, September 12th, choose a mile, .44 in your community. That's our traditional walk distance in Philadelphia. But come together, send your pictures, hashtag recoverywalks, exclamation point 2020, and you can be part of it, too. So in a way, the challenges of COVID, I call them the gifts of COVID, the things that we've turned to, the creativity and responsiveness, which we've all come to serve the community and the people that we want to help, lets us maybe make this even more approachable, and more people can be involved. So we're looking forward to it. We're celebrating recovery together, and we're thankful to our Commissioners for their strong support all the time, and for this recognition with this proclamation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got a picture, right? Thank you. Do you need, are you taking a picture? Do you want to stand kind of in front of us?
Hi Jen.
Hi, thank you so much. Good.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we get ready for our next commendation, just wanted to say, because of the Governor's order of social distancing, we will have some people in and out of the meeting to make sure that they are here for their agenda item, but we're trying to keep it under 25 people. So if you see some movement going on, that's what that is. And as we begin this one, I wanted to make sure that I let everyone know that Lieutenant Christian Brown, Chief Chris Engelhardt, and Sergeant Chris Ives are all here from the Hilltown Police Department. And we are here because we wanted to give a commendation to two officers, Officer Christian Hannis, as well as Officer Matthew Reese. So they'll all be up in a minute, and we have a video we'd like to show you right afterwards. I guess I will read the commendation first, and then we'll do the video. This came to my attention, I guess because the video went virtual or viral, and I also saw that it was in the newspaper. I am a horse rider and a horse lover, so of course it was special to me. As you watch this, I'm sure it will be special to you. But the real reason that it spoke to me is that especially at a time when our police have been under such pressure and fire, this just goes to show how you always show up, you save the day, no one else is around, fire companies haven't gotten there, and I feel the adrenaline going, and it was just a scary moment all around, and you just stepped right up there. My favorite moment is afterwards, when you both get out and greet each other. So we'll see that in a minute, but first let me just read the commendations, if that's all right. And so to both Officer Christian Hannis as well as Officer Reese, we are pleased and proud to present this letter of commendation in recognition of your brave and selfless service to our community on July 23rd, 2020. At approximately 10:30 a.m., while on patrol, you responded to a barn fire in Red Wing Farm, 1531 Hilltown Pike, where you rescued a frightened horse in display of dedication to duty above and beyond what can be asked of our public servants. Upon arriving at the farm, UN Officer Matthew Reese, or UN Officer Christian Hannis, ran toward the barn, deterred by neither the thick column of smoke rising nor the flames raging through its roof. Bystanders alerted you, though all employees had been evacuated, one horse was still inside. You entered the burning building without a moment's hesitation. Inside, you found the horse frozen with fear and unwilling to budge from its stall as flames consumed all they touched. Despite the animal's determination to stay put, you fought to lead it to safety. Together with your partner, and with the assistance of Red Wing Riding Instructor Lena Obernasser, you were successful in removing the horse from the barn at the cost of some injury to yourself. Soon after your exit, the barn was entirely engulfed in flames. In addition to yourself and your fellow officer, eight people received medical attention as a result of the fire, including four who required treatment at a hospital. We present these commendations to recognize this selfless act in defense of a helpless animal, who almost certainly would have perished if not for your intervention. You demonstrated the excellence that all public servants strive to achieve, and we join all Bucks Countyans in offering our gratitude. So, can we show that video?
Is everyone out?
Yeah! Let the horses out! Come on, boy!
Out! Let's go! Come on! Come on! Come on, boy! Come on! Out! Come on, baby! Give me a rope! Give me a rope!
There should be one hanging right there. Other side, right there. Please get around.
Come here! Come here! Come on! Come on! Come on! Yeah, watch out, Christian. Watch out, Christian. Pull it, Chris. Pull it, Chris. Come on, horse, pull it, Chris. Come on, horse, pull it, Chris. Come on! Come on, baby, go! Come on, baby! Help us pull! Help us pull! Help us pull! Come on! Come on! Come on! Come on, Christian! Come on! Come on, Christian! Help us pull! Help us pull! Help us! Help us pull! Come on!
Let it go! Let it go! Let it go!
You OK? Holy dude! Holy dude! Good job! I lost my hand, David. You all right? Yeah.
Matt, please come on up. We'd like to give you these commendations. District Attorney Weintraub wanted to say something, but isn't the end really great when they see each other again and they made it? Do you want to hand these to him?
Is it OK for me to say something?
Yes, I wanted you to.
You literally have to see it to believe it, but I had an opportunity to talk with both of these officers. If you want to see that interview and their own words, go to bucksda.org. But I asked Christian, what were you thinking? He said, "You don't think, you just act," as he literally demonstrated courage under fire, stole the fire. And then I asked Matt, "Why did you do it?" And his one-word answer was, "To help." You cannot epitomize service over self, public dedication, any better than these two men. And here's the craziest part. They were treated for their injuries, minor injuries, and you know what they did next? They finished their shift. So I'd like to think that if I were confronted with an emergency situation like this, that I would have the courage under fire and the automatic reaction that these two dedicated public servants demonstrated. But I don't know. And I don't have to, because they do it for us every day. They allow us to live our lives in this bubble that we created, that we sometimes tend to take for granted. But not today. And for that, I'm very, very grateful. Thank you, Officer Reese. Thank you, Officer Hannis, for your incredible bravery. And Phoebe, of course, the horse, thank you very much as well. Thank you both.
Chief, does Chief want to say anything, or either Officer like to say anything?
Chief? We know to cover the horse's eyes now? And that's the whole thing.
And where they always keep the rope is on that one side of the stall, right? Officer, anything that you want to say?
They really don't like fire.
Oh, yeah. That's really scary. Well, that's, and thankful to your families, too, for supporting them and for being here today. Take a picture? Do you want to come up, like, everybody come on up? Get your Lieutenant and Chief.
Family members want to take some pictures? They're afraid to come up and make pictures?
Let's do this one, and then if the families want to jump in, they can, too. Yeah, we want you here, come on. Get everybody?
I'm trying to figure out how Officer Reese got hired. His name's not Chris.
OK, everybody's good?
Good.
Great. Thank you. Thank you once again. Be safe. Thank you. I've only watched that video like 10 times, and still keep watching. So, moving on to public comment, and this is a brief public comment on agenda items. Before we do any online, are there any people in the, here in the room that have any brief public comments on agenda items? OK, yes, Mr. Warren?
A couple of good examples of why we should not defund the police. Two, just a quick comment and then question. One, although I didn't see your video the other day, I read about the town hall and actually reference COVID, et cetera, and I thought it was very good. I could just, whatever it's worth, offer a word of caution. I'm not so sure it's good to compare Pennsylvania to New York and New Jersey as far as taking care of it. They are the two worst, by far, states as far as controlling deaths from COVID. So, but be that as it may, my questions for the agenda are, it's actually a same question for a number of items. Two, 5A, seven, A, B, C, and G. Just a general question as to, would those projects have been done were it not for COVID? And if not, how did COVID generate over $2.5 million investment in those projects? Thank you.
OK. Do you have other public comment on the, that's come across?
There are no email comments today, Commissioner.
OK, so with regard to number two, I see that Ms. Humphrey is ready to answer.
I am, thank you. For 2A, where it says county 0%, that indeed would not have happened without the pandemic. What that contract does is it relieves the Board of Election telephones from ringing, which are currently ringing off the hook. As you know, there's 10 employees directly in that office, and with everything going on in the news media, they're not processing applications as quickly as we'd like them to. And also, the new voters, we still have 6,000 new voters that we need to get registered when they go in to look at their online ballot application. We have no data field there because they haven't registered them yet. So this company will only answer very softball questions. We had a call with this company. It's actually owned by a resident of Bucks County. It's all local employees. It's out of Willow Grove. And if they get a question that is more substantive, they will immediately forward it back to the Board of Elections, where they'll rank five different phone lines. So the way phones are being answered now essentially will be the same if it's a difficult question, but if it's something simple, like go onto the Sure system, what does pending mean, you know, go to votespa.org, all that little stuff, they'll be able to forward. But anything of substance will come immediately back to us.
With the next one, I'm sorry, I would have to ask you from the audience, did you say 5A?
Yeah.
AB network.
Was it AB?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I take the whole thing in. So we are trying increasingly to be able to have court held when there are people either in a district justice office or in the jail, to not be able to transport, take people in and out of the jail, to have the sheriffs transporting people back and forth, so we are able to do these hearings that way. So that is necessary. Did you, tell me the next one, of seven?
Seven, A, B, C, and G.
OK.
I don't think, you may be, yeah, G's, you may have a different agenda, maybe you have an older agenda. G is township of Middletown Langhorn?
Right.
Yeah, that's not COVID. That's actually, there's a, there's a couple of intersections that Pendott is redesigning in Middletown, right, adjacent to Core Creek Park? And to take some of the, I think they're doing turning lanes, and they have to take some, some of the land away for the right-of-way to do that. So that's what that's about. That's not COVID-related.
All right. But I had said, cares, that's why I mentioned that.
No, it's not, OK.
I didn't think it was, but, OK.
So any staff who wants to jump in after I kind of give a summary, or other Commissioners, you can. On 7A, B, and C, so 7A has to do with the generator over at Nishamani Manor Nursing Home. So obviously, we have 350 residents there, many who are on oxygen, many who are, you know, at risk of COVID and have had different parts of COVID. And if we have to move them and get them out of that nursing home because the generator doesn't go, doesn't work, or something happens, we're going to have to take them to a hospital that are going to be already overloaded. So yes, this is definitely part of that. And the air filtering and the air conditioning, all, there's a, there's a whole host of things that are connected to the electricity over there that are necessary. As far as Dewberry goes... Correct, because we can't take that risk. You could do that if you didn't have COVID, but you can't, there's nowhere to take, we can't evacuate people to a hospital who are at risk if the hospital is full of people who have COVID. We can't put that stress on the hospitals. And imagine other, we couldn't exactly go to another nursing home, either. The second one has, with Dewberry Architecture, yes, that's more of us trying to be able to outfit the court system so that we don't have to continue to have court hearings. And specifically, we are also trying to make sure we can have a mental health court. We have had a series of problems related to COVID, related to mental illness issues because Norristown State Hospital hasn't accepted people. Other rehabilitation centers and hospitals haven't take, have not been willing to take people. So we are trying another solution to that. And the diversified storage on the Health Department, did you, do you have that one coming?
Thank you, Commissioner. Regarding item 7B, if I can add to that one as well, one of the things that we're looking at conceptually with the fifth floor is larger courtrooms that would allow for increased, you know, better social distancing, creating additional space.
For jurors as well as witnesses?
For jurors as well, yeah. Be able to have, right now, the courtrooms were challenged from a jury trial standpoint, based on the number of people and where we put the jurors in there, and make sure their space far enough apart. And there's certain limitations when it comes to criminal, as well as in civil cases. We're limited right now as to what they can do in there. So this will give us better ability for that.
Thank you.
More space there. And as well as, like you mentioned, additional space for mediation type in a mental health court that they can have in there as well. Regarding item 7C, which is at the Health Department, one of the items that kind of, we'll call it a shortfall we've had within our Health Department building there, when COVID hit, you know, the... COVID hit, you know, Health Department sprang into action. They basically created a command center. We created one inside of an existing conference room they had there, which is very small. Number of people we had in there was very, very close together, was not ideal given the situation and given the distancing that would really be optimal to have for staff that are really fighting the front lines, taking those phone calls, coordinating with the hospitals. So, part of this is basically creating a command center on the second floor, which will allow for greater social distancing. In doing that, we're moving the environmental health people downstairs, the staff and all their files. So, this file storage will allow us to move them downstairs, create that space for not only the command center, but also actual call center within that second floor area of the Health Department building. Right now, we basically created a makeshift call center within that old auditorium that they have at the Health Center. So, this is critical and kind of getting, giving us the space we need on the second floor to create both the command center and the call center for our health operations relative to COVID.
Terrific. Was there any other numbers there that, that I'm missing besides?
You said, was he correct for that?
That's the last one.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from board members or anything? I would entertain a motion to adopt items 1 through, let me just make sure I get the number right, 1 through 20. I believe this is close to like 86 total items, more than 50 of which are cares related.
1 through 18.
Yes, it's about any of them.
1 through 18.
I'm back on another agenda, that must be, because I have 20. Okay, 18, that's a good one to pick on. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda in a minute, and items 1 through 18.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. So, let's make sure I have the right one. Beginning with number 19, under the commissioners, the first thing is to approve a resolution extending the declaration of disaster of emergency March 13th, 2020 relative to the pandemic outbreak through November 19th, 2020. I'm going to take these as separate motions if it's okay. So, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 19B is Intercultural Works, approve the contract to provide professional development workshops covering diversity, equity, inclusion, and team training, and that is for $1,000. Ms. McKevitt, did you want to say anything about that, or?
Happy to. One of our goals is to help our staff be educated in diversity and inclusion. So, what we've done is hired a professional in this, in this area, working with our Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Bernard Griggs. She will come in and work with our administrative staff first, actually, our division leaders and department heads and our fifth floor staff, and bring together these folks, talk about how we will implement new policies and procedures within the county. And after that, we will engage her to work with the rest of our staff throughout probably later part of this year, early beginning of next year.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And number three, and I'm going to let Mr. Harvey explain this in a second, but that's the New Americans Advisory Commission establishing the New Americans Advisory Commission and adopting the bylaws today.
Thank you, Chairman Chair. There are a number dozens, actually, of committees, boards, authorities that do a variety of work for the county in a wide range of everything from the Water Authority to Park and Recreation, to drug and alcohol, to, you know, senior citizens, pretty much every group, agricultural preservation, Airport Authority, there are a wide variety of groups that serve this county, all sort of on a volunteer basis, all providing guidance to the commissioners, to the county government, helping us to do our jobs and helping to make the county run as smoothly as possible. One of the areas that sort of occurred to the commissioners earlier this year, one of the areas where we haven't, we don't really have a much in the terms of having our ear to the ground, is with people who are residents of Bucks County who are first or second generation immigrants. And certainly, over the past 50 years or so, you know, we've seen a rise in immigration. Law passed in the mid 60s that changed some of the laws that had been passed in the 20s, which were, you know, quite frankly, very, very racist laws in terms of immigration restrictions. Those laws were changed in the 60s, and we've seen a different, a new wave of immigrants coming in. We want to make sure that the county is hearing from those voices so that we know what kind of challenges are being faced here in our county by people of all different backgrounds and faiths. And so, this commission, the New Americans Advisory Commission, will meet, you know, periodically, once we're going to name members today, and we're going to ask them to really kind of, you know, be our ears and eyes so that we know what kind of challenges immigrants in Bucks County are facing, and see what we could do to help make that even better. And so, we're establishing the commission today, the bylaws. I want to thank my assistant, Steve Souffert, who worked a lot on this with the help from our solicitor, Joe Kahn. And we do have one of the people who is going to be named today, I'll ask him to come up a little bit later on after we formally nominate him. But I want to thank the board as well for their willingness to move forward on this. And so, I'll make a motion to establish the New Americans Advisory Commission and adopt the bylaws.
Is there a second?
Thank you. Yeah, I, great idea. You know, this is something I think we should be doing. And there's a gentleman sitting in the back, Steve Hugert, who's Commissioner's Harvey Executive Assistant, and he put an awful lot of work into putting this together and deserves an awful lot of credit. So, I want to give Steve a shout out for the good work he did in putting this all together. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. And that's a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes. And number 20, this is close to my heart, and I'm very excited about this. I think both my colleagues are as well. The African American Museum of Bucks County in Langhorn, approve the rental of county property located at 827 Langhorn Newtown Road to, in Langhorn, subject to final approval by the solicitor from October 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2030, for $1 a year. Before, we have the Director of the African American Museum and our projects and our special projects, I can't remember this, and diversity officer speak, I just wanted to say, this is an old farmhouse on 413, right by St. Mary Hospital, that when I became a commissioner many, many years ago, I had asked General Services and Bill Mitchell about that building, and I had been told that, boy, it is a project of Mike Fitzpatrick's that he had never been able to get anything done with. And if you get in the inside, as we did, you can see why it was hard to get something done with it. Parts of this building date back to 1716. And so, over the years, nothing has really happened, and now finally, we have been able to put the pieces together. Bucks County Water and Sewer hooked up the water and sewer for us. General Services is helping to get it ready, and it will hopefully very soon be the African American Museum. Hoping maybe Commissioner Deidre Alamo and Harvey would like to say something about this and about our trip there.
Hi, Jean.
Jean, do you have anything you want to say about our?
Again, the, the, the home is on 413, very close to St. Mary's Hospital, and I've passed that place 1,000 times, and I knew it was very historic, very old, and it always appeared to be empty. And I said, always said to myself, boy, that would be, something would be a really good fit for that home because of the historic value that it has. And as Commissioner Morsergle has said, I mean, we all went for a tour of the home, and I just think it is a absolutely perfect fit for the African American Museum here in Bucks County. And I think it'll be an attribute to the people of Bucks County and to the county as well. So, I think it's a terrific idea. I think we're charging them a little bit too much for rent, $1 a year.
It is a little steep. Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you. Certainly, as somebody who's spent almost my entire life reading and studying American history and teaching American history, this is something I was, you know, kind of more than happy to jump on board with, and I know Commissioner Morsergle has been pushing for this for a while. And I had a chance to meet Ms. Sally a couple times, and I know that especially in conjunction, some of the work that our Recorder of Deeds, Robin Robinson's been doing, identifying documentation that goes back to the 1700s that does document a part of Bucks County history that most people don't know, which is that there were slaves in this county and slave owners in this county. And it's, it's convenient, I think, sometimes and comfortable to just sort of separate, well, that wasn't done here, that was only in certain parts of the country, and it's unfortunately not the truth, that there was slavery in Pennsylvania. In fact, we know that one of our proudest Pennsylvanians, Benjamin Franklin, really was one of the, the start of the abolition movement in this country, one of the movers and shakers who wanted to get rid of slavery even before we, we went independent. And so, I think it's an important piece to note that we have a long history, a long African American history in this county, and I think this is a great way to, to show that off, and I'm proud to be part of it.
That's, that's great. And so, I'd ask if Ms. Sally, and I don't know if you have anybody with you, and Mr. Griggs could come up and tell us just a little bit about the museum, and I guess about the building, and how we're going to, how we're going to tackle this. If you don't mind using the podium with the microphone there, that would be terrific.
He's got it.
We need to get you a mic.
He's got it.
Oh, he has it. Hi.
And feel free, feel free to take the mask off if you want to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is such a great pleasure for us to be here and thank the commissioners for all the work that they have done in supporting the museum. We are excited. You know, the museum is about the history of African Americans and their journey through Bucks County, and we're here to tell the story. The reason I'm so excited about this building is because I heard about this building many years ago. When I retired in 2003, I was a volunteer teacher at a senior citizen daycare, teaching 12 extraordinary women how to quilt. They sat and told me many stories about Boone Farm, and how they left the South in the middle of the night to come here to find a better life, and they worked at Boone Farm. I was not aware of where Boone Farm was, didn't know anything about Boone Farm. And then, when I talked to Diane Dexaya, she says, Linda, I think you forget, the building is called Boone Farm. Well, I almost fell out the chair. I said, do you know the story of Boone Farm? She says, no. And this is the history that we want to share with other people. These ladies and men came to Bucks County and lived in a small area called, today is called The Terrace in Bristol. And they lived there, and they came for a better life, and they worked on Boone Farm. And the story was, the truck would come down to Boone Farm, come down to the terrorists, pick them up, and carry them over to the farm. They would work all day, get paid, something that wasn't being done in the South. And they lived here, raised their children, and they have a better life today because of the work they did at Boone Farm. So, I'm excited. I'm so excited about it. It is a long story. There's many more stories about Boone Farm, but I'm only going to share that one because that's the one I sat around the table and heard. But I would like Bernard to tell you about the structure and what needs to be done with the building and, and how we're going to go forward. Thank you again for all your work, all, because this took a lot of doing. A lot of people was involved. I don't know all of the players, but I do know they all worked towards helping us get this so that we can open it up so the public can come to teach the children and the human community about the Black history in Bucks County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Bernard?
I have to tell you that I share the same excitement as the commissioners, who are visionaries on this project, as well as Mrs. Sally and the rest of the team at the African American Museum of Bucks County. I have to tell you, from the very first tour that we took there, keeping in mind, you know, my construction background, I could see that there's a lot of work, but I know that the work can be done and done professionally. So, we're excited about this project and moving the project forward. I'd just like to kind of tell you where we are in terms of moving the construction process of the project forward. And, you know, as we move this project full steam ahead, we're finding that meetings are coming out of nowhere. We literally have a meeting this afternoon onsite with the architect at 1:30 that just came about late last night. But anyway, we have our professional engineer, Panoni, who will be the professional engineer for the project and will be providing us a proposal for design services needed for the adaptive reuse of the Core Creek Building at the Boone Farm. And the proposal, which we should have by the end of this week, will include civil, structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing and fire protection design, and to convert the existing building to a usable museum space. The civil scope will include land development, and the structural scope will consist of documenting minimal repairs needed, as well as an analysis of the floor framing, the floor framing to support live loads associated with the proposed use, which as you know, will be a museum. Panoni will engage in a firm for site surveying and engage in an architect, which we will be meeting this afternoon, along with a historical consultant to design minimal finishes, upgrades for ADA compliance, and recommendations to preserve the historic aspect of the building. The architect will put together bid specs, we will put the project out for bid, and we will hire contractors and then move the project full steam ahead. So, essentially, you know, we will be doing an entire retrofit of the building and making a new space for the African American Museum of Bucks County to be able to safely display its exhibits and artifacts. And, you know, the renovation of this building will serve as their new headquarters with offices on the third floor loft. Why this is especially cool, this project, is the fact that, you know, the museum is sort of a roving operation, and since the COVID pandemic, they have been essentially not able to operate. So, to be able to have a place to call home is especially cool, and we're just excited about moving the project forward, but it's looking good.
Thank you.
I got to tell you, just a quick shout out to our team at General Services, because Evan Spencer and the crew has been especially well helping us here. But we're good to go. Thank you.
That's, good to hear that, good to go. So, you have a motion and a second, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Moving to budget adjustments. Our budget adjustment today is for the Law Department for 150,000 self-insurance. Anybody have any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel actions? Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or concerns on the personnel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Board appointments. Commissioner Harvey, do you have?
Yes. Yeah, several board appointments. I'll start with, we talked about the New Americans Advisory Commission, and I'll start with that. Dr. Umar Farukh is here. We're actually going to name, nominate him, I'll enter his name and denomination to be the chair. I want to ask him if he could go up and just say a few words.
First of all, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And thank you so much, Board of Bucks County Commissioners, for appointing, appointing me to chair New Americans Advisory Commission. Thank you so much. I am really honored and humbled to accept this position, and thank you for your confidence in me. Thank you so much. So, I'm Dr. Umar Farukh. position, and thank you for your confidence in me. Thank you so much. So I'm Dr. Umar Farukh. I practice internationally in Ben Salem. I came to the United States in 1991. After completing my residency and going through all the hardship, all the immigrants go through, I started my practice in Ben Salem in 1999. So I'm still practicing in Ben Salem for the last 20, 20 years. And GD drama, so we are from Ben Salem. Yes. So it's, so the mission of this commission is, that resonates that what I have been doing throughout my life in the United States, building bridges between the communities, working across the aisle, be part of civic engagement, advising new immigrants on the path to success, guiding them to thrive on this land of opportunity. So the purpose of this commission is enhancing interracial and interethnic dialogues with new Americans, first and second generation. That's most very important. And identifying opportunities throughout the Bucks County for equitable economic growth for inspiring Americans in Bucks County. And to advise Bucks County Commissioners on matters related to new Americans, to identify challenges they face to reaching to their full potentials, and addressing their concerns related to education, jobs, health, and legal matters, to assist Bucks County residents in easing the path to citizenship. So this is really important. So they are here, they need to be citizens to get their full rights. So there are some obstacles, especially those with language barriers. So I would like to propose ideas like adult English language literacy program and American history education, because that is part of the citizenship when they go. And what I face myself when they come to me, because they need, because they need a letter from the doctor too, because they can't learn English and they can't learn the history. And sometimes it makes sense because they're older people and they're not, they don't, they can't even read their own language. So at this point, I try to help them, whatever I can do. But it's really a very difficult process. How can we make it easy is really questionable so far. And mobilize volunteers to take part in uplifting their communities from different communities. That's really, really important. So my motto is that no community should be left behind. Let's all grow together and progress together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So just to note, we are, made our best effort over the past several weeks, working with the other commissioners, to find representatives from different groups that live here in Bucks County, South Asian, as well as East Asian, Caribbean, Latin American. We are also looking, Middle Eastern as well. We're talking with some representatives of the Liberian community here in Bucks County. We're going to be having representative from their organization soon. The commissioners do name someone to be a liaison. Steve Soufert is going to be that liaison. And we're also including some native-born Americans, people who are not first or second-generation immigrants, but who work with organizations, or in some cases, work as attorneys in immigration law, so that they can have their input as well. And so an organization called Welcoming the Stranger, which has done a lot of great work over the last several years, they have representative as well. So it's my honor to formally place into nomination for the New Americans Advisory Commission, Dr. Umar Farukh, Mr. Eugene Potak, Patrice Tisdale, Duke Wu, Stephanie Fernandez, Lois Heist, Razan Karu, and Stephen Soufert. These are all terms which will end on the second day of January 2024.
That's in motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? I just want to thank everybody for serving. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay. Moving on to next boarding commission. Commissioner Geraldo, did you have, did you have a board or commission person to nominate?
Uh, yes. I'd like to, it's agenda item number six on the appointment board, and that is a nomination for the SEPTA Board for a five-year term. And I would like to put the name of John Cordisco and make a motion to nominate him for that five-year term. I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Are there any other board commissioners?
We have some reappointments.
Reappointments, okay.
Yes. We have, I'll do these all at once. Samantha Barrios to a three-year term on the Drug and Alcohol Commission. That's a reappointment. Mr. Stephen Jones, a reappointment to the Juvenile Detention Center Board of Managers, three-year term. Dr. Sarah Arva Grazek and Mr. Robert Yocum to the Mental Health Developmental Programs Advisory Board, those are three-year terms, all reappointments. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And we do have two new appointments to the Park and Recreation Board. Mr. Thomas Marino and Ms. Kristen Winters were both members of the transition team that focused on parks and facilities. They have expressed interest in serving in the Park and Recreation Board, five-year terms, Mr. Marino and Ms. Winters.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we will move on to other civics. Are there any other civics today?
I do, yes. I'm chair for, make a motion to give $2,800 to SCORE, Bucks SCORE. The organization does a lot of work, has actually helped us with our economic recovery team, helping to work with businesses. We're struggling, small businesses struggling to make it through the past several months. So I'd make that, I make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner, any other civic today?
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to the Chief Operating Officer's report. Ms. McKebbit?
Thank you, Commissioners. A couple of updates. One, we just approved 50-plus CARES Act projects and contracts totaling probably about $5 million. Our next efforts will be to work with our farms on locally sourced food for our nursing home and prison and youth center. So that will be forthcoming. One correction I want to make, last, at the last meeting, I mistakenly mentioned that children and youth moved into the admin building onto the fourth floor. They are actually on the third floor. And we are welcoming our Human Resources Department to the second floor. They moved in yesterday. They are getting settled in today. And Consumer Protection, it will be following soon on the second floor, right next to our Human Resources Department. Upcoming project, our County Comprehensive Plan update is due. It is the comprehensive plan, for those of you who may not know, it is governed by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. It is to be updated every 10 years. We are to take a look back at what's happened in that 10 years in terms of growth. Each municipality has their own comprehensive plan. The county has one as well that governs, governs and guides issues like transportation and housing throughout the county. We'll look at land use. And one of the things that we'll do this time around that we haven't done in the past is a market research statistical analysis of our residents to include them in this process. We have, we have done surveys before, but not statistically based. So we're hoping that we will get information from them collaboratively with our residents, our municipal officials, other county agencies, to take a look at our services and help us prepare a plan that we can move forward with in the future.
Terrific. That's it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? We'll move to the Solicitor's Report, which I accidentally referred to earlier in the Administration of Oaths. So--
Thank you, Commissioner. We have some guests coming in and as they're coming in to take their seats. I'll start just by providing an update. There's been a lot of talk today about the important work that the commissioners have been doing, serving underrepresented groups. And for anyone who has come to just a few meetings or has watched any of Commissioner Harvey's presentations, there has been a very strong focus on making sure that we have a successful census this year. As many who have been following the news are aware, the administration abruptly changed course and suddenly abbreviated the timeline, giving everyone involved in the count much less time. There is a period for data collection that is designed to make sure that populations that are particularly hard to reach, which includes immigrants, it includes non-English speakers, it includes ethnic and racial minorities. The period for that outreach and for that count has been shrunk from 81 days to 52 days. And obviously, that has happened in the middle of a pandemic, when it's been especially hard for those involved in the count to make sure that everyone is included. There are significant ramifications for the county if we do not have a full count. And obviously, there are significant implications for the people of Bucks County if they are not fully counted. That's the reason that a group of plaintiffs, including public interest groups and county and city governments on the West Coast, along with Harris County in Texas, brought a lawsuit about a week ago against the Department of Commerce and the Secretary of Commerce and the Census Bureau and the Director of the Census Bureau, trying to get court-ordered relief to change that decision and to return to the old timeline so that we can have an accurate census. At the direction of Commissioner Harvey, our department then got involved in trying to support that effort. And we joined up with the outstanding lawyers in the Santa Clara County Council's Office, which was putting together a coalition of California public entities. And we helped make sure that Pennsylvania had some representation in that, in that effort. And as a result, just yesterday, that coalition of California entities was joined by Austin, Baltimore, Boston, Dallas, New York City, Portland, Seattle, Cook County, Illinois, as well as a trio of counties here in southeastern Pennsylvania led by Bucks, also Delaware County and Montgomery County, to add our voice, to provide the perspective and provide the legal arguments for the court, to understand that this is not, this is not right, it's not fair, and it's not legal. And in particular, the brief sites right here in Bucks County, the important ways in which census data is being used to help our health department do contact tracing. It's just one of the many ways that show how closely this hits to home. And I in particular want to thank the efforts of one of our new assistant county solicitors, who actually began her practice in the Northern District of California where that was filed, and that's Amy Fitzpatrick. And with that, if I may, Commissioners, I'd like to welcome and recognize one of the newest members of the Court of Common Pleas here in Bucks County, the Honorable Jordan B. Yeager.
Morning.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Your Honor, as you are well aware, this board has had a very strong commitment to improving the quality of legal services available to the people in the county, has had a strong commitment to making sure that within the county, there was a law department that raised the bar of professional excellence, reflected the integrity and the values of this administration. And it gives me great pleasure to report to you, Your Honor, that in the course of doing the work for the county over these past few months, we've been able to bring on the county's first full-time assistant solicitors, who will dedicate all of their law practices serving the people of Bucks County. And in particular, we're joined by our two newest assistant solicitors, who are joined by their families. And with the court's, with Your Honor's permission, I would introduce them individually and then perhaps give Your Honor the floor.
Great.
Your Honor, with that, if I could please introduce and ask her to appear with her family, Amy Fitzpatrick, who I understand is here with her husband, Mike, her children, Carter, Hadley, and Tanner, and her friend Paige. Your Honor, as the Fitzpatrick's come forward, I really want to say how much joy it gives me to introduce the family and Amy to Your Honor and to Bucks County. Amy in particular is a passionate advocate. She is someone who grew up in California, but for over a decade has made Bucks County her home. This is where her husband, Mike, and his family are longstanding fixtures of the community. Mike was born and raised in Holland, went to Archbishop Wood. His family of teachers and police officers are very well-known and respected throughout the county. Amy began her legal practice where she went to law school, which was in San Francisco with the University of California Hastings College of Law. And after beginning her career in San Francisco at Bingham McCutcheon, which is now part of the Morgan Lewis Law Firm, handling a very broad range of antitrust and intellectual property and complex commercial litigation, she also had her first taste of doing pro bono legal work, having done a lot of volunteer and community service before law school. Her work included election protection with the Lawyers Committee of Civil Rights, which has been very involved in a lot of the litigation we talked about today. Amy moved and made her home in Bucks County when she and Mike formed a family here. And before starting up a legal practice here in Pennsylvania, she has actually been an organizer and leader in the community on issues such as food allergies and pediatric COVID-19 infections. Folks watching may have seen Amy and her daughter on the local news this spring, educating parents about potential COVID symptoms. She has a food allergy blog that has won national awards for its use of scientific data to help parents make informed choices for their children and then become empowered to respond to allergic emergencies. The Fitzpatrick's are proud residents of Iviland, where they live with their two dogs and their chickens. And Amy already, as I've said, has hit the ground running and has been involved in a whole variety of efforts from election issues to health and social service issues. And, Your Honor, with that, I am pleased to present Amy Fitzpatrick for the oath.
Great. So and then, so I'll administer the oath to Amy, and then we'll have the second solicitor come up, and then I'll say a few words at that point. Does that work for you?
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. All right. You want to, you want to come forward? I don't know if you want to have any of your family with you for this? All right. And what do you, are you, you're holding the Bible? Do you want to have your family hold the Bible? All right. Do you want to repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm--
I do solemnly swear or affirm--
--that I will support, obey, and defend--
That I will support, obey, and defend--
--the Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States--
--and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania--
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania--
--and that I will discharge my duties--
And I will discharge my duties--
--with the duties of my office with fidelity--
With the duties of my office with fidelity--
All right. Congratulations.
Your Honor, finally, if I could present Austin Soldano, who's here with his wife, Leslie, and their newborn Grace, who will not be standing. Your Honor, this is something of a homecoming for Austin. Austin is born and raised in Doylestown, graduate of Central Bucks East High School, more recently graduated Order of the Coif from the West Virginia University College of Law, and began his legal career by coming home to Bucks County, clerking just across the street, Your Honor, with Judge Boylan, serving along with his wife, who's also an attorney and who clerked across the street. And after finishing his clerkship, he served in the District Attorney's Office under our DA, District Attorney Weintraub, who spoke extremely favorably and highly about Austin's dedication as a public servant. His, the only bad thing he had to say was that he was sorry to see him leave, and spoke about his commitment to the people of Bucks County, his hard work as both a trial and appellate lawyer, which he did before going to private practice at the law firm of Sweet Stevens, Captain Williams. That gave Austin a chance to expand his professional experience to include a lot of civil litigation and a lot of municipal work, including representing school districts across Pennsylvania. We are thrilled to welcome Austin back to the county. He is grateful to be representing his hometown and his community and to be here with his wife and their baby daughter. May I present Austin Soldano.
All right. Austin, you want to come forward? You're gonna have the baby hold the button? All right. Do you repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm--
I solemnly swear--
--that I will support, obey, and defend--
I will support, obey, and defend--
--the Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States--
--and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania--
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge duties of my office
And I will discharge duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to play this role and to thank Mr. Khan for the invitation. I want to acknowledge President Judge Bateman and Court Administrator Mr. Heckman, who are also present today. And it's, I just want to say a few words to the newly sworn-in assistant solicitors. It's an exciting time in your lives, but it's a particularly exciting time to be practicing public sector law and to be practicing it in this county. There's a few things going on in the county. And to have an opportunity to add your legal talents to serve the people as we're experiencing an unprecedented public health crisis, unprecedented economic crisis. And I've heard through the grapevine that there's an election, I think, coming up. And to be in a position to advise the Commissioners and, in effect, to be directly serving the community is a great honor for you, and it's an honor for the county to have the benefit of your service. One of my favorite presidents, Theodore Roosevelt, said, "Justice consists not in being neutral between right and wrong, but in finding out the right and upholding it wherever found against the wrong." And there's a difference between being a lawyer for a client in the general sense and being a lawyer for a public entity like the county. Because your job isn't simply to find out what your client wants and what your client's goals are in the narrowest sense and pursue it as an advocate, but it's also to recognize that these are the representatives of the people of Bucks County and that you're the representatives of the representatives of the people of Bucks County. And that requires you, as public sector lawyers, to keep a broader eye on what's right and a broader eye in everything that you do, whether it's in negotiations or as an advocate, to be a representative for all the people of Bucks County. And so I'm pleased to welcome you to this role, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
And we will move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Harvey, any comments for today?
Just a few things. Just want to pick up a little bit on, as Mr. Khan said, with the census. Thank first off all the residents of Bucks County. Bucks County still, I believe, has the highest response rate in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in terms of responding to the census somewhere around 67, or excuse me, 76 or 77 percent, which is really fantastic, but it still means that we're missing 23, 24 percent of the county in some way, shape, or form. Obviously, the pandemic has limited the old traditional way of sort of going door-to-door and knocking and saying, "Hello, I'm a census worker, and can we make sure that we count everybody who's here?" Although that still is happening. I was told yesterday by Representatives from the Census Bureau that there will be people coming around door-to-door, and they are specifically coming to homes of people who have responded already. And it's really more of a quality control. So if you have already sent it back, whether it was paper or you did it online, there may be a census worker knocking at your door because they want to make sure that the information they received is accurate. And they'll be doing that sort of a statistical check to make sure that they're doing it properly. So please keep an eye out for that. The ring doorbells and the other sort of electronic doorbells that have little cameras on them has really cut down on how many people open up their doors to people that they don't know. But we would ask you to be conscious of people who have the census worker buttons and shirts, and they're trying to do a constitutionally mandated function to make sure that we're represented properly, to make sure that we do receive the amount of state and federal funding we're entitled to that goes to things like roads and schools and senior citizen centers and everything else. So I appreciate the support that we already have gotten and ask for everybody to continue being supportive. I also am proud to announce that we are launching the second round of grant funding. The Bucks Back to Work Grant was launched, the first phase was launched back in May and awarded about $14 million to small businesses, about 900 small businesses all over the county. The second round of grant funding will be launching, the application will be live on September 14th. There will be a webinar for any businesses who are interested on September 9th, which is next Wednesday at 3:00 PM. The webinar we did back in May for the first round was very successful, answered a lot of questions. We have taken a lot of feedback from businesses in our first experience with this in May and June, and we've made some adaptations to the application process. We hope we'll make it much, much easier. We tried to make it as simple as we could to help businesses be able to do this. This round of funding will be open to any business that makes up to $2 million a year in gross revenue, and it is open to any business with 49 or fewer employees. So you still have to qualify as a small business. It will be open to franchises, and so that was a consideration. There were some businesses that qualified as franchises and weren't eligible, and there are different definitions of franchises, so we've kind of opened that up a little bit. If you did apply for the first grant and did not receive funding, for whatever reason, you can apply for this. If you did receive funding in the first grant, go around, you are not eligible for this time round. So we're hoping to send out the Commissioners, hoping to put out about $15 million in grant funding for businesses and hoping that we can keep that lifeline there for the small business owners throughout Bucks County. And I just want to end with, again, being a history teacher, I would have started school yesterday. It's the first time in a long time I didn't wake up and have students to teach on the first or last day of August, or on Monday, I guess it would have been. Today marks the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II, a war which was the worst war in human history. The true death toll is not known and probably will never be known, but estimates range somewhere between 60 to 100 million people died in the Second World War, including over 400,000 Americans. And those Americans who fought in that war, many of whom I've had a chance to know over the course of my life and proud to know many family members and many people here, certainly know family members or had family members who served in World War II, we often call the greatest generation. And we think of them that way. We don't think of them as Democrats or Republicans. We don't care where they came from. We don't really care what service they provided, what branch they were in, what theater of operations they served in. They answered a call to duty. They fought for their country. 400,000 died. Millions were wounded. Millions came home with wounds that didn't show. The nightmares and the trauma and the substance abuse problems that affect veterans today affected veterans in World War II. We just didn't talk about it. And so it was sort of ignored. What makes them the greatest generation, I guess, is probably that they put their country and their fellow Americans above themselves. And certainly, at this time, it seems like we're asking for far less of many Americans, and most Americans have complied and have gone along because they understand the importance of putting others before themselves. But we still unfortunately have some who feel it's an infringement on their rights to do something like wear a mask. So I'm wondering, how many of the World War II veterans who survived prisoner-of-war camps and the beaches of D-Day and Iwo Jima and Pearl Harbor didn't survive COVID? Certainly, a pretty good number of people we've lost. And those are stories that won't come back. Hopefully, we have them captured somewhere. But I ask all Americans to keep in mind the sacrifices of the past, especially again on the 75th anniversary of sort of a lost in history. We forget about it. But it's something that stays with me, and I'll always be conscious of, and I ask others to be conscious of too. Thank you.
Wilson, and thank you.
Commissioner Trump.
Yes. Thank you. Just a couple of comments on the National Drug and Alcohol Recovery Month. And I think it's really important that we celebrate recovery. As a parent who has a son in recovery, I can assure everybody it is an absolute blessing and a miracle. And I always say that recovery is possible, and you have to have hope, but you also have to get the right kind of treatment for the proper length of stay. That is so important. So it's important that we celebrate recovery. But I also think it's important that we remember the people who did not recover. The number of deaths in Pennsylvania from drug overdoses right now are probably somewhere, I think they vary from year to year, but it's somewhere between 15 and 20 people die from drug overdoses in Pennsylvania every single day. These deaths are tragic, they're heartbreaking, and they're preventable. There's many phases of addiction, and I say all the time that alcohol by far is the number one abused drug that we have in this country, by far. But alcohol doesn't kill you right away. And it kills you over time because of other diseases, whether it be diabetes or liver disease or heart disease or cancer. So it kills you over a long period of time, but nonetheless, it kills you, alcohol. We see cocaine starting to raise its head, methamphetamine right now, but certainly the attention on the opiate and heroin epidemic is where we need to focus on. And the statistic, and I've said it, maybe you've heard it before, the United States of America is 4-plus percent of the world's population, and we're consuming 80-plus percent of the opiates that are manufactured in this country. And it's the same darn story all the time that I hear from addicts and families. And my work in Harrisburg, I traveled around the state of Pennsylvania, and I've talked to many, many families who have lost loved ones because of these opiates and heroin. And again, it's just heartbreaking to hear these stories. The same story, they get hooked on these opiate prescription drugs for whatever reason, quickly change over to heroin because it delivers a more potent high and because it's cheap and available and all over the street. And it's to heroin, most of the time laced with whatever, fentanyl and other stuff that is killing our family members and our young people. It affects almost every family, every family here in the state of Pennsylvania. And here's where I get myself in trouble, because here's where I direct my anger at this addiction to opiates and heroin, and it's with the drug companies and the subsidiaries that distribute these opiates across this country. There's three distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and Amerisort Bergen. They distribute over 90 percent of the opiates that are manufactured in this country. They ought to be ashamed of themselves. We ought to be ashamed of ourselves for what we've been letting them get away with for years. It's outrageous. It's nothing short of criminal what they've been getting away with. And the drug companies. Not every drug company manufactures opiates. There's five major drug companies that manufacture the opiates, Purdue Pharma, Teva, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Allergan, and Malacron. The way they've misrepresented the dangers over a long period of time to these drugs, not only to the public, but to the medical community, is disgusting and indefensible. The way they've marketed these drugs as not being able to get addicted to them is just incredible. Now, I know Bucks County, and I've had the discussion with Commissioner Marchaglia, has filed a lawsuit, I believe, a year ago or maybe between a year or two ago, against not only the drug companies, but these distributors, and I think that's a good thing to do. Some of the other local communities across Pennsylvania has also filed a lawsuit. I know the Attorney General for Pennsylvania has joined with other Attorney Generals around the country and filed a lawsuit. These drug companies need to be made to accept responsibility for the damage and the mess that they've created in every community, not only here in Bucks, across Pennsylvania, but across this country. It is not only accept responsibility, they should be criminally charged, and I mean that criminally charged, for what they've been able to get away with for a number of years. The executive, the owners, and also the Board of Directors. It is indefensible what they've been doing. Now, they've gotten a little bit better because the states have filed lawsuits. Some of the states have already settled with the drug companies and these three distributors. And they always settle before they get to court. You know why? Because the drug companies don't want to have to go in court and see discovery and see what they've been doing, because they know there's a lot of evidence out there that'll get them in a lot of trouble. So it is my hope that as we move forward with some of these lawsuits, that we don't settle for a small amount of money. I want to see these lawsuits against these drug companies and distributors be the same thing that actually would happen with the tobacco companies, where they were forced to pay tens of billions of dollars a year over a long period of time. I think it was like 20 or 30 years. We could use that money, Bucks County could use it, to help with treatment, to help our law enforcement out, go after these criminals that are peddling this garbage on the street to our kids. So let's not settle easily. They need to be held responsible. They have the money to pay the states and the counties. It's absolutely defensible. For all the families that have lost loved ones, we need to make sure we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Thank you. I couldn't say it better. You have been a leader on this in this community for a long time, and we walk with you and we stand behind you, Your Honor, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to just wait? We'll do public comment, you can say that. This is the last thing I just wanted to say, was that it's been actually one of my favorite meetings. It's been an honor to be a Commissioner and a Chair as we were able to honor our police officers today, honor Bucks County's history, and honor diversity. So I want to thank everyone for that. And now we can take public comment on any issue. And Dr. Frick, if you had wanted to speak, if you could come up to the microphone, though.
Thank you. That was a very hot topic. Jean, what you said, so I'm, as I said, I practice general medicine, so I face this issue. So I practice office and nursing home and hospitals, so I have good experience. So when we're talking about this opioid addiction, I know we, number one, is those pharmaceutical companies. But as a medical professional, you know that they made the pain as a fourth vital sign? That mean when you go to the doctor, when you're in the nursing home, it's a fourth vital sign that you have to assess the pain. And if you don't assess the pain properly, you are in trouble. Nursing homes have been cited, doctors have been sued because we did not control the pain. So our hands were tied too. I was writing too much narcotics, I know that, because my hands were tied. Patients were coming and complaining, "My pain is not controlled." So it's a subjective issue, so I have to give them medication. So this is kind of not only pharmaceutical company, it's kind of a very big role, even from the government. The government made this rule, you have to control the pain. So right now, I know there's not much narcotics, I barely write any narcotics. But my heart goes out for the people who are addict. Addiction is a medical condition, especially the heroin. It's rarely available. Narcotics are not available as much because they're very, we don't write it, and they're very expensive. Somebody get it, not many to sell it. So all that is heroin. So what are we doing for those people who are victim of this addiction? That is my question. I have to work on that even more. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are public comment? Seeing none, I would make a motion, or I will accept a motion for adjournment.
Subdue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn to the U.S. September 16th.